Let's come back together for the second docket of our afternoon session. And I'll ask Ms. Fox if she would read the docket, please.
Docket 16-003. Application has been filed by Skyway Towers LLC and Cell Co. Partnership doing business as Verizon Wireless for approval to construct a 190-foot telecommunications tower on 27.235 acres located at 2615 East Highway 146 in unincorporated Oldham County.
All right, with that, we'll ask now Ms. Alvey if she would introduce the docket, please.
Ms. Fox stated this is a request for cell tower location in 2615 East Highway 146 in La Grange. The property is zoned I-2 heavy industrial and the total acreage for this parcel is The leased space area is 10,000 square feet. And I wanted to touch on that because in our zoning regulations, Section 200-040 I-2 Industrial District Property Development Regulations, the minimum lot area is 10,000 square feet. It does not specifically state that the leased area or the minimum lot size for non-steward property is one acre. It specifically states that the minimum lot area for properties in I-2 is 10,000 square feet. And that's what the applicant has shown on their lease and all their drawings. There was a minor plat that was done back May 23rd of 2012 that created this tract. It was a division from, went from one tract to two tracts. I found this in part of my deed research, so that's why on your staff report it shows that it's a total of X amount, 26 acres or that. But the actual area or the site where this is going to go is the 10.859. This is the area view of the property. This is obviously from the existing building pad that was there from when it was Anaconda, Canada Wire, Magnet Wire, if you're familiar with the area. But the subject property is the lot that is located at a butts East Highway 146. This is the aerial from our GIS. And this shows the existing zoning of the property and surrounding properties, which are I-2 and I-1, and then you have residential that runs along the very, very rear back of an adjoining property. All documentation required by Division 340 Antenna Towers for Telecommunication Services has been provided by the applicant and was included in your packet. The planning office was officially noticed on January 21st, 2016 of their request to be on the February 23rd, 2016 agenda, making the 60-day ruling deadline March 21st of 2016. Notices were mailed to adjoining property owners by the applicant via certified mail on January 21st, 2016 as well. And again, all documentation required by the Division has been provided by the applicant. The applicant is proposing to construct a cell tower that would be 190 feet tall with a five-foot-tall lightning arrestor attached to the top for a total height of 195 feet. The plan also includes a concrete foundation and a shelter or cabinets to house radio, electronic equipment and other equipment. The applicant is proposing a 30-foot-wide ingress and egress and a 15-foot easement on the north side of the leased area. The access would be from the existing asphalt drive and have a gravel parking lot with a gravel turn. The applicant is proposing a 30-foot-wide ingress. Okay, that's a duplicate. The applicant is also proposing a 15-foot utility easement to the east connecting the leased area to Kentucky Highway 146. The applicant is also proposing an eight-foot-tall chain-link fence with three rows of barbed wire atop for a total of nine feet to secure the site. Landscaping shown under Tab B, Page C3 of the application outlines the 20-foot-wide landscape buffer. And the applicant is proposing to plant six-foot-tall evergreen trees 10-foot on center with continuous hardwood mulch. Mature height of these trees is a minimum of 20 feet. The vertical profile sketch of the proposed tower, Tab B, TE1, shows no lighting on the tower and also shows the location of three antennas for future carriers to co-locate. And the applicant has also prepared and submitted a geotechnical engineering report, Tab D, which indicates the two testing board samples were done at the base of the proposed When the tower is taller than the distance from its base to the nearest property line, the applicant must furnish the commission with a certification from an engineer registered in the Commonwealth of Kentucky that the tower will stand winds of 70 miles per hour. The proposed tower is located approximately 126 feet from the east property line and 142 feet from the south property line. The certification is located behind Tab C of the application and states that the proposed foundation plan is designed for base wind speeds of 90 miles per hour with no ice and 30 miles per hour with 3/4-inch radial ice. This is a view from Highway 146 looking into the site. This is the entrance drive from Highway 146. This is just another view looking east, going towards Henry County, and you'll see across the street is Northland Corporation. This is the west view. Again, this is Northland over here. And this, there is an existing fence here that has vegetation on it. This is another view that just shows the adjoining property of Northland. This is looking into the site from Highway 146, and you'll see this is the applicant's notification sign. This is inside the site looking back out to 146. This is the entrance drive, and there is an existing fence. It's kind of hard to see, but there's an existing fence that goes through there that has vegetation on it. And I'll get to the reason why I keep saying that here in just a second. And then there is a tree area along the southwest property line as well. This is a heavily tree area here. This is the entrance drive exiting the property. There is a fence line here and a fence line here that has vegetation on it as well as a heavy tree line here. This is the site plan, site survey plan. This is the overall view. Then we'll go into a little bit more zoomed up view of it that shows the 10,000 square feet leased space. This is your 15-foot easement there for your utilities. And then the 30-foot ingress and egress easement is there. This is the tower elevation, total height of 195 feet. This is a detailed site plan. This was the plan that was submitted and was distributed to you, everyone, with your packets. And then this shows the distance of the site plan with distance to the nearest property The landscape requirements, Section 340-080, Item 2, states in our requirements, "The outside perimeter of the security fence surrounding the antenna tower shall be provided with a landscape buffer. The buffer is to be a minimum of 20 feet in width and contain a continuous evergreen screen that will achieve a minimum of 20 feet in height." The applicant, since the time that we had sent out your packets, had submitted a revised landscape plan. This was a landscape plan that was submitted in your packet that shows, you know, the continuous evergreens here that surround the compound, I guess you could say. And what they are asking is to use the natural vegetation that is inside their leased area to use that as screening. So the areas there in green are the natural vegetation that is inside their leased area that they wish to remain in place. The items in red are the evergreen plantings that will be planted for additional screening. We'll call it on the east and west side. The north and south, they would like to use the existing vegetation. This is a revised landscape plan. In relationship to the comprehensive plan, Goal E265, "New telecommunication towers should be located and designed to minimize impacts to the existing trees and vegetation as well as visual and land use impacts. Permit new telecommunication towers and utility substations provided that a more suitable site is not available, co-location is not feasible. The proposed facility is cited to minimize the visual impact on adjacent areas, and vegetative screening, fencing, brimming, and other measures are provided to minimize the view of the facility from adjoining roads and properties." And then our comp plan also speaks of it again in Item BI-1-4. Oldham County will facilitate broadband infrastructure and telecommunication availability for residential, governmental, and business segments of the county. And that is all that I have.
Before we open it up for questions for staff, Alvey, do you have a picture of the landscaping that is there now as far as how heavy it is on those two areas that they want to leave?
This is the, what we will call, I guess we'll call that the, what do we call that? The east, south, no, sorry, southwest, be the southwest. This is the heavy, the heavy tree area here.
Okay.
Oops, I'm sorry, I'm going the wrong way. This is the entrance road here. This is an existing fence that runs, whoops, my heart rate. There's a fence through here that shows the vegetation there. So that vegetation is grown up through the fence on both sides along that entrance drive there.
Okay.
So those are the two areas. Let's see if there's another one. That's along 146. The side along the entrance road is similar to this area here, but that area is not within the leased space, so they couldn't use that as a buffer because it's not within their leased space and wouldn't have control over that vegetation being removed in the future.
Okay.
I think, you can see some here as well. This area here is all fenced as well and has the shrubbery.
All right, any other questions for staff? Oh, Mr. Douglas, I'm sorry. Mr. Urban's head was in the way.
Amy, can you show me again where the entrance is off? Is the entrance off of 146?
Yes.
The ingress?
Uh-huh.
And I guess on one of your photos are there revised landscaping?
Mm-hmm.
Was the existing landscaping they're asking to remain or not to do is on 146?
No, it is along the entrance road. Let me get to the, this is, this is their site plan. This is the existing entrance here that goes back to the other property, the other lot. So they would use this for their entrance to come into the property. They want to, the existing brush mass here and here is what would remain, and then they would put plantings in this area and this area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you turned it back off.
Your mic's not on, sir.
Didn't bring my map here, but maybe you just answered my question. The length of the access road, does that look like 149.07 plus, plus whatever the apron part is? Is that?
Yes, it's 149.07 to this point, and then it's 46.28.
Okay, and that is, and that's the one that's 24.3 wide or something at this point?
Yeah, 24.1.
Okay, thank you, that's all I need. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Okay, any additional questions for staff? Ms. Albertson?
The revised landscape plan, did the staff okay that?
Yes, we reviewed that before presenting it to you today.
You're okay with that?
Uh-huh, yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Kung Fuze?
Are there any issues with the existing is hardwood, so it's, it's not evergreen, so it looks, it'll be covered more in the summer, but is there a competition between hardwoods choke out evergreens? Is there an issue there?
They're, they're not proposing to plant evergreens in this area. They're going to use the existing brush.
My question is, will they choke, tend to choke out the evergreens?
I don't know. I'm not, I'm not qualified to answer that question, I guess.
That's what they're going to plant the way.
The evergreens are going here. Yeah, they're not planting evergreens in the green. They're going to leave the brush there.
Right, they're not mixing them together.
Okay.
They're going to plant in the red area, brand-new vegetation, separate from the green area, which will have the existing hardwoods.
And the applicant might be able to address that or a little bit.
Yeah, they're not going to, they're not going to mix.
Yeah, I think you're right, Bobby. If you put them together and you didn't give enough space in between them, there is that competition and things could happen. But when they're, when they're separated, I don't know that it's going to be an issue.
Okay, any additional questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, we'll now move into the presentation by the applicant or representatives and others in support of the application. Mr. Pike, you have 10 minutes, sir, and we'll need your name and address for the record, and we'll get folks sworn in that will be testifying, if you would. I mean, I'm sorry, 50 minutes, yes, sorry.
And I'll make certain I don't take up all of that today. For the recorded record, my name is David Pike. I'm the principal with Pike Legal Group, PLLC, PO Box 369, Shepherdsville, Kentucky. And, Mr. Chairman, if it's permissible, I'd like to tender this black binder, which is copies of official exhibits for inclusion in the record. I'll give this to Mr. Urban at this juncture.
Okay.
I also have some hearing binders I'd like to distribute to members of the commission, if I could.
Are they different from what we have?
Yes, some supplemental materials.
All right.
And, so if we could, Joe, would you kind of go to work with Ms. Alvey there? And I know it's a little irregular, but I'd like to request that the Chair inquire if there are anyone here in opposition. If there is not, that will obviously affect the nature and duration of my presentation.
Carter, do you see any problem with that?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone here that will be speaking in opposition to docket PG 16003, the proposed cell tower?
It's a pleasure to be more popular today than during one of my previous appearances.
Yes, sir. And if you would, is there anyone else that's going to be testifying or providing?
There's a few people who may be here to answer questions, so we should probably all take the oath.
Ms. Fox?
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
All right, thank you all. Continue.
Okay, whenever you're, whenever you're ready, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, it's a pleasure to appear before you again, and it's also a pleasure to, it's kind of rare in my business for a cell tower to be the most popular item on the docket. I'm glad that that's the case today. Having said that, it's still important that I provide some important information that I know the commission is concerned about. I certainly want to talk about some of the landscaping issues that have been addressed by some members of the commission. However, I will make short shrift of a significant portion of my presentation, since I believe everyone here is acquainted with much of it based on my previous appearances. First, I, again, I want to thank Jim and Amy, in particular, and your staff for their very hard work in connection with our case. We burn up the phone lines and email traffic with them. We're grateful for their efforts. And of course, one of the reasons why it indicates here that we have met all of your filing requirements and all of your regulatory requirements is we take that seriously, and your staff does an excellent job of reminding us when we are not taking it as seriously as we should or that we've missed something. We're grateful for their input and grateful for the very professional job that they do on behalf of your community. Of course, we waive confidentiality on a voluntary basis, and a copy of this presentation is included in the binders that I've distributed to you. All of the contents of your binders is also duplicated in the main one that I provided to Mr. Urban, which should be included as an exhibit in this proceeding cumulatively. Of course, your staff did a good job of speaking in many ways on our behalf today, indicating that we have met all the requirements. There are three binding elements that are listed in the staff report. I am prepared on behalf of the applicant, on behalf of the applicants, to indicate that we accept all of those binding elements, copy of which is included in connection, on this slide. Our site plan, of course, is included at Exhibit B of the application materials. A few things to note, this is, of course, located in an I-2 zone. We can't always do that, but when we can, we strive to try to locate commercial and industrial zones. We were able to do that in this instance. One of the things I'm particularly proud of our site acquisition staff for is we managed to come up with a location that's over 1,000 feet to the nearest residential structure. And in a densely populated community like Oldham County, that's not easy to do. And I'm gratified that we were able to locate a site that does that. This site does not have to be lit under current Federal Aviation Administration standards and will not be lit. A couple of words about our site plan. Originally, what we had done is to do kind of the no-brainer, which is let's plant, let's plant trees all the way around it. The difficulty with that is, is that your own regulations call for preserving existing vegetation when possible. And frankly, the existing vegetation will be more in sync with the area and will look more natural than any set of evergreen trees in a row that we might plant. After some careful consultations with your staff, what we came up with was an approach which would preserve that vegetation on two sides and would plant new trees on the other two sides. I think that's appropriate in this instance. I think it serves the interest of your comprehensive plan. I think you're exactly right, we couldn't mix the two, which means the alternative is, is that we go in and destroy all the existing vegetation in order to plant new trees, which I don't think serves the community's interest and certainly doesn't serve the interest of people who will be looking at this site from the exterior. We've documented our radio frequency need, that there's a critical service gap, including both coverage and capacity in this area, and of course, that witness is here today, if you have any questions to ask of him. Here's, of course, a depiction of our current coverage in the area, and this is afterwards. And of course, we take our obligation to our customers seriously, and we want to try to provide that high-quality coverage that this community has a right to expect and that this community vitally needs. Of course, this is our search area. We have to locate a site within that search area in order to be able to enhance our service and have it integrate with our existing network and maintain proper spacing. Ultimately, if we can co-locate, we always do. It's less expensive, it's easier, and it does not require us to appear before you, although it's always a joy to appear before you. At the end, and frankly, it's just good business. In this instance, there are no tall structures within that search area or immediately proximate to it. The only thing that's close is a water tank that's just outside of the search area. We specifically modeled it, and it's not nearly tall enough in order to be able to meet our service objectives. Let's see, other, you know, other kind of key stuff, you know, we've provided you with your county tower map, which is required by the statutes, and of course, have documented that there are no tall structures within our search area or immediately near it. We provided a planning report from Marshall Slagel, who has over 35 years of service with the staff of the Northern Kentucky Area Planning Commission. He's the only former six-time president of the Kentucky Chapter of the American Planning Association. We were joking over dinner last night that if there was a Mount Rushmore of planning, Marshall's head would be on it. And he recommends that the tower be approved, citing all the factors that your own planning staff cited from your comprehensive plan justifying it. Property values are dealt with at Tab B. Marty Brown is our expert witness who's present. He's, he tenders reports indicating that, that a development of this type will not adversely affect real estate values. We deal with structural considerations in a report prepared by William Grigsby, an expert in tower engineering. He's also the designer of this hearing room and this courthouse that we're standing in today. And of course, he finds that it meets and exceeds all state and national standards, and in a bit of engineering flourish, indicates that the event of a direct strike by a tornado, this would, quote, "be the last thing standing in the vicinity." It's built, it's overbuilt and over-engineered for its purposes. Tower and foundation designs are tendered at Exhibit C, which of course are stamped and sealed by a licensed and registered engineer in the Commonwealth of Kentucky. A geotechnical report is also tendered, again stamped and sealed by a Kentucky engineer. Floodplain information is provided by us, by us, by a registered surveyor, indicating that this does not fall within a floodplain. Tower heights, and again, I'm not so bold as to suggest this is a short structure. It is not, but it is short by cell tower standards. Within a five-mile radius of this location, there are eight FCC-registered towers. All eight are taller than this tower. The average height of the registered towers that have previously been permitted and approved is approximately 271 feet. That's over 76 feet taller on average than this tower is. So again, although it's a tall structure, it is on the short side and certainly consistent with prior approvals that have been granted by the Public Service Commission in the old days and by this planning commission more recently. We meet all local requirements, and I think that's undisputed. Your staff has indicated it, and we've done a very good job, I think, of documenting that with the required filings. And of course, we meet chapter and verse, all of the specific requirements under your Code 340-020, and of course, meet all of your design standards as well. We've talked at some length previously about federal telecommunications law and how it makes this case different. I think it's, I think it's undisputed and I think accepted that, that of course substantial evidence has to be utilized in the, in the disapproval of any cell tower case, that generalized expressions of concerns regarding aesthetics, as an example, do not constitute substantial evidence. Lay opinion when juxtaposed against expert opinion does not constitute substantial evidence and cannot serve as a basis for a cell tower disapproval in the Sixth Circuit, which we're obviously part of. Obviously, issues like health effects and environmental effects cannot be considered by the commission. And of course, when it comes to property values, let's note that property valuation, in our opinion, is not, cannot be used as a basis for a cell tower disapproval for several reasons. First, any disapproval on that basis would be equally applicable to any site within the search area, and hence would constitute a prohibition of service, which is prohibited under the Federal Telecommunications Act. Second, it's worth noting that one of the reasons we include that report is under the terms of KRS 109865-sub-19, we are required to, quote, "consider," close quotes, "real estate values." It does not list that as a grounds for disapproval by the commission under the terms of the Kentucky revised statutes. Of course, these are utilities, and we are registered as a utility with the Kentucky Public Service Commission, noting again that, of course, this site does not have to be lit under Federal Aviation Administration regulations, and of course, guy wires are not, are not sought and are not required for this type of monopole structure. We're, and it's worth noting, based on other issues that you have considered today, this is a very low traffic generator, only about one trip in and out per month. And with, okay, I won't say that, that would be tacky. Anyway, Federal Communications Commission's report is included in your hearing binder. And I've noted this statistic before, but I want to come back to it because I think it's worth noting, this is not just another land permit issue. This is a land permit issue that is vital to the safety and security of your community and to the health, safety, and welfare of your community. 70% of all emergency calls nationally are made from wireless phones. That percentage increases every single year that this study's done. Juxtapose that against the National Health Information Survey Study, which indicates now that 50, over 55% of all children in America live in households that only have wireless phones. And you understand why the mission that we're on, to permit and construct wireless communications facilities which provide high-quality in-building coverage, is not just something that we do for profit, it is something that is vital to our customers and it is central to who we are as a communications network. One of our, you know, one of the old mottos of Verizon Wireless that our ad campaigns left behind many years ago, much to my chagrin, was "It's all about the network." And that's always been the case, and hopefully always will be the case. We could try to get by with less, but that's not the mission that we're on. Our mission is to provide the sort of reliable safety communication system that, that communities like yours need and deserve, and to serve our customers when they need our service most. We've, we've developed proposed findings of fact, which are included at Tab G of the hearing binder that I've distributed to you. And of course, a printed copy of this, of this presentation is included at Tab H. I have several witnesses who are listed on this slide, Gordon Snyder, Marshall Slagel, Marty Brown, Bill Grigsby, with the permission of the, of the Chair and the commission. What I would now like to do is stipulate that their written reports, which have been filed of record, constitute their testimony here today. If there are questions, they'll be glad to try to answer them. And I think that's something of a record for a presentation. Mr. Chairman, in terms of length, this is, this is the last approval that we need. We've worked hard to locate a site that is in maximum conformance, not only with the, with the letter, but also the letter, but also the spirit of your regulations, and the fact that I am playing to a largely empty room is testimony to that. If there's any questions, I'll be more than glad to try to answer them.
Okay. So that completes your presentation?
It does.
Okay. All right. I asked earlier if there was anyone here that was opposed, and I didn't see any hands go up or anybody stand up, so we will move into, I guess, our questions. So, Mr. Pike, I do have one before we get started. That, I don't think I saw it anywhere in here. When do you anticipate your client building the tower?
I would like to be able to give you a firm answer to that. I cannot today, truthfully. And the reason is, these sites only get budgeted for construction as soon as all of the approvals have been obtained. We would certainly anticipate that occurring within the next two years. But I can't give you a date because it doesn't get queued up for budgeting until such time as every I is dotted and every T is crossed.
All right. Mr. Horton, you have a question?
Thank you. I noticed, by the way, your circle of service misses my house probably by about 500 feet, so.
It gets mine, that's okay.
Does it get you? Okay. Good. Could you orient me a little bit? I didn't bring my map here, and it probably was on that. Can you orient me a little bit on the two things as to where the drive going into this location would originate and about where it would terminate?
Okay. Amy, do you have a copy we can put down so that everyone could benefit from this?
That's what I'm wondering. But it's already, yeah, it's already in here, is what I'm wondering.
If not, I can.
It went off the asphalt, they said. But I'm wondering, this one or that one? That was my question. Asphalt off of 146. Yeah, that was it. There you are.
Okay, so, this is very high-tech. I'm gonna see if I can pull this off. So, what happens is we use this existing road and then turn in, like so?
Okay.
Is that helpful?
Yeah.
So we're using the existing, we're using the existing curb cut, so, out onto the main roadway. And of course, we obtain an easement over that for our purposes, but it's not actually, that portion is not actually a new road.
Okay. And the cut after you turn off the existing road back into the site, that is the road that was shown earlier to be 100 some 49 feet or something like that, is that correct?
Uh, okay, then, what is the distance?
No, that was the, that was the main.
Okay, you're utilizing, okay, so that was the main road then?
That's the main road, correct.
Okay, what is the distance from the main road there back into the location of the site approximately?
Oh, well, the actual access off the roadway back into it is very, very short because you see, our compound is 100 by 100 there. So if this is the compound like so, that's 100 by 100. We're just doing that.
And that would be about, let's see, 100 by 100, so it'd be a third of that.
Less than 100 feet.
Oh, well, no, less, you want to venture again?
Probably get your child to come forward if you would, so we can get it on the record.
Well, it's 100.
So, the actual road back into our leased premises, 25 feet, something like that long?
Okay.
That's new? That's about it.
That's fine. That's what I was wondering. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. McWilliams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Pike, thank you for the volumes of information that you and your folks have provided to us. Tell me, when, this whole thing of co-location, it says that you must make reasonable attempts. What, how do you define reasonable? What does that look like?
Well, lawyers make a living on words like that.
No, you do.
And defining them. What I would, what I would indicate is, is that if, as an example, if there are tall structures in the area, that we should, it is perfectly appropriate to require applicants to look at those tall structures and determine whether co-location on them is feasible or not. The statute addresses a variety of factors that can be considered. Whether or not they're in the right place, do you still accomplish the radio frequency objectives? Is it structurally sound enough to be able to do it? Can you enter a lease or an accommodation with the owner of whatever that structure is? So, I mean, as an example, we never get to a point like this without having very carefully looked at all of the surrounding cell towers and we look at other very tall structures, you know, that, you know, that might be, you know, that might be sufficient to meet that objective. From the commission's perspective, ultimately, if an applicant cannot rule out, in particular within a search area, a tall structure on one basis or another, I believe that's a valid grounds for disapproval of a cell tower application under the statutes and should be.
If a competitor owns water tower, whatever, you would put your signals on, can they refuse to co-locate with you because you would be a competitor?
They could, but there's a very practical reason why that never occurs. And it's an old proverb, sauce for the goose is sauce for the gander. All of these companies have existing reciprocal lease arrangements with each other because if, although these companies are fierce competitors, make no mistake about that, I mean, they work very hard competing against each other and trying to come up with any competitive advantage that they can. Ultimately, if you took that stance with a competitor today, tomorrow you would be in the same position wanting to co-locate on one of their towers. So what has emerged are national, what's called MLAs, master lease agreements, that interlock all of these companies. So if Verizon Wireless to co-locate, as an example, on an AT&amp;T tower or some other carrier, it's not a question of whether you can or not, it's, you go to the master lease agreement, it sets the rates, it sets who pays for what, who has to do modifications on the tower. It's all spelled out, chapter and verse. And the rates are uniform across the board. So ultimately, co-location on nearby towers is, for carriers, the easy solution anytime you can.
Carrier meaning you?
Yes.
However you lose a revenue stream, as opposed to if you had your own tower, you could have people co-locate with you.
Well, if, well, if we have our own, quote, if we have our own tower, quote-unquote, then we have the ability to lease that out to other people. But at the end of the day, what's most important to these companies is, when you co-locate, it is a miniscule amount of money in terms of capital investment versus what it takes to construct a new tower. And also, it can be done like that. A process like the one I'm involved in here, I mean, this started a year ago. I mean, it takes a long time to put all this stuff together. I mean, and I appreciate the compliments on us being thorough and submitting all of it. We're the very end of a very long process, only part of which is visible here.
This may be my last question. Does the height of the tower determine the number of people that can locate on a tower?
I'll give you a lawyer-like answer, yes and no. It does not directly affect whether the tower is structurally capable of accommodating the additional antennas. However, at some juncture, since there has to be a vertical separation between each of these carriers that are deployed, at some juncture, if you get low enough, it becomes unlikely that a company will want to locate its antennas on that tower because they will not be able to provide adequate coverage. That's one of the kind of interesting dilemmas that planners face in determining what are the appropriate heights for cell towers. Ironically, taller towers tend to, over time, have greater co-location potential because they don't suffer from that issue. At the same time, going over 200 feet means that they have to be lit, which carries with it its own set of issues for residents in the community. So it's not directly related in terms of the physics or the structure because no matter how tall a tower is, you can build it strong enough to accommodate whatever number of antennas you want. The issue is whether it will have, whether carriers would have an effective need at the lower height.
So as part of your decision-making process on the height of a tower, you do think in terms of potential revenue?
We start with the following concept on every, on every tower. We start with what is the height that we have to have? Because we can't justify a request for taller than that before a planning body. So you will not see us come to you as an example with us being at 150, but we're asking for 190.
Well, how would I know?
Well, because we provide you with sworn testimony that that's the height we need.
Your people, your folks' testimony?
Yes, absolutely. So, now, we are also required by your regs and by, I think, the terms and kind of spirit of the KRS to engineer towers to be able to accommodate multiple providers. And of course, the reason why I would postulate that you do that is, of course, if you build, if all new towers are required to accommodate multiple providers, it tends to reduce the potential for the construction of new towers overall. So from a planning perspective, it's the one violation of Milton Friedman's old maxim that there are no free lunches. It is a free lunch. So do we consider revenue? Yes. But the driving force between, how many carriers will be able to have to be accommodated on these towers is focused on your own regulatory requirements and the rules that you write.
Okay.
Let me, let me just add to this, that what you don't see as commission members, that we see as staff, is that probably four to six times a year, we get co-locations either on water tanks or on existing towers. You don't ever see those, so you don't know that they happen, but regularly, we're asked, do we need a permit to locate? Can we locate? And so there are people co-locating on existing facilities all the time.
Mr. Pike, thank you. Mr. Chairman, thank you. Commissioners, thank you for allowing my questions.
Did you have something?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Mike on?
My question to you is for basically my own education. Do you always lease property? You never purchase property, put it down?
I've done thousands of these things, and I've never seen, I've only done one purchase in my entire career. They're all, virtually all of these things are done as leases or easements, and we've agreed to disagree on the easement thing, but they're done as, you know, they're done as one or the other. And kind of the way, the way it works is, is that there are rights to be able every five or five to 10 years to renew it, typically up to like 35 or 40 years. And I have never seen one be terminated. You know, it can happen, but I've never, I haven't seen it yet.
It tells me you all pay them enough.
Boy, okay.
Pay them enough.
Okay.
The other question I wanted to ask, after maybe 50 to 100 years from now, when technology has become more advanced and there is possibly no need for those big cell towers, what happens?
Well, we're obligated, if this facility is disused for a period of six months, to remove it.
And there also is a binding element that you always are considering in your approval.
I will also tell you, we've been doing those since the beginning, and I've never seen one come down.
Anything else?
But, but we're obligated to do it, and I'm concerned about age issues, having just received a call that, an automated call that said, hello seniors, you're eligible.
Mr. Crosby, anything else? Okay.
Any additional questions? Mr. Douglas?
Spike, I'm trying to wrap my head around this, but, you know, I guess, can you explain, or maybe one of your engineers explain, the site location and justification of how you came up with the location of this particular location to service areas? Because, and I looked at your overlay of existing coverage now and your proposed coverage with the new cell tower. I see that definitely you're gonna grab some I-71 customers. It looks like you're gonna pull in compared to the last coverage. And the rest of the coverage is in areas where there's hardly any populated areas.
Well, that doesn't make those customers any less important, but.
I understand that, but most of that's either culture or.
But having said that, the person to, now, of course, this is, this is both a coverage and a capacity site. And I think the person to try to answer some of your questions on that at a technical level is Mr. Snyder, if I could call him up, who's our radio frequency design engineer. If you would, identify yourself and.
Gordon Snyder, Verizon Wireless. My address, 2421 Holloway Drive, Louisville, Kentucky, 40299. With the tools that we use, it provides heat maps, and it pretty much shows the areas of concentration of where, where a lot of the capacity is coming from. Now, a lot of times, and what we're seeing more and more, is in areas where you have weak to almost no coverage, your capacity demand is going through the roof because there may be somebody out there who's got, you know, like across the street at the industrial place across the street, who's trying to use their phone. And as they're requesting data, either the cell tower's not hearing the phone or the phone's not completely hearing the cell tower, so it just keeps asking for that information over and over and over and over again, driving the capacity man through the roof.
But do you have data to show, the data that shows that, are those drop calls and trying to reach the cell towers coming from customers on I-71 or stationary customers?
A good portion of it is coming from I-71.
So my question to you then is, there isn't a coexisting tower with Castle Rock within so many feet off of 146 and I-71. Wouldn't that capture a lot of those calls?
Some, but not all of them. I mean, we're working, we're currently working on another tower right now at the Pendleton Truck Stop exit. That's gonna work in conjunction with this overall area as well.
But what I was trying to get at was Mr. McWilliams was saying about the justification of coexisting with other cell towers. I was trying to get to the point, what customers are you capturing? And I find it that seems like to me the data you're proposing is the I-71 customers, which.
It's a good portion of them.
Good portion of it. I would imagine, I mean, just by my history of it, it's just, I'm thinking there is a coexisting tower that you could co-locate on that and probably grab those same customers instead of grabbing no man's land out in the middle of nowhere.
Which tower are you talking about?
There's one on Castle Rock, Castle Rock Towers, off of 146 near, I guess it's a, on your all this map, you've got L1, I think it's designated.
I'm not sure what tower he's referring to.
David, he's looking at this.
Good approach.
I guess he's talking about that one. 104332.
Is that our current?
I think it's J1, I believe. In the document I got, there's a. It's off of Highway 712 and 71. Crown Castle, south.
If we can locate exactly where it is.
It's on your map right there. I mean, it's just bird's eye throw. C1 is the heat timer.
I don't know which one it's looking at. Well, we have.
Put it on the screen if you would, or on the overhead, and then we can all see what you're talking about. Just draw on the screen, sir, if you would.
Okay. So you're referring to, let's see, this one here?
Correct.
Our other existing tower that we're already on is right here, which puts that Crown Castle site right into the, right into, starts encroaching on, too much overlap between the sites? I mean, yes, we are looking at traffic on 71, but we are looking at increasing. I mean, yes, we are looking at traffic on 71, but we are looking at increasing and bettering coverage to the residential areas towards northwest and north of the site as well, as well as 146. It's not just I-71.
But in the tree on your site location map, it doesn't really show...
Your mic on, Mr. Douglas?
This one is, yeah.
Oh, okay.
I mean, it doesn't really show that. I mean, you're talking about residential areas, but I think we're all familiar here. I'm not sure, I guess there's a little bit of subdivision out there. I mean, if you just take your overlay coverage, that's on their tab N, which is current coverage Is this one not correct? That's their data.
This is.
No, but I don't think that covers their whole coverage. This is their coverage that they're going to have with LaGrange East. This is the coverage without.
Mr. Douglas, I guess to, you know, get to your point...
Well, my point is, you know, he's testifying, they're testifying that they need this cell tower, and they can't co-locate, like they told Mr. McWilliams, because they can't reach their coverage. But he's testified that primarily, most of their data coverage that they need because of drop calls or drop coverage is because of I-71 customers. They're proposing that they may increase coverage to some of the areas outside of 71, but how many residents live out there? There's no testimony that says that there's, how many dropped coverages are out there?
Yeah, but I guess, as chairman, whatever, I would, you know, why is it relevant? If we're picking up 71 coverage, it's still important.
I think it's relevant because we're supposed to be looking at the fact, can they co-locate to another existing tower? Have they proven that to us yet? I don't know.
That's a question, you know, that's a legitimate question.
That's a question I legitimately ask, and if they can propose that, that's, this is...
When do I get to, I'd like to cross-examine the witness, when is that appropriate?
That'll be just here shortly, I mean, we, yeah, we've got, we're just, you know, we're kind of the point of asking, the commission asking questions.
That's fine.
And so, I mean, are you...
I'd be glad to ask the pointed questions.
There was one more, but this might be for our legal, or it might be for Mr. Pike. I noticed the notification letters that went out stated that this was for Mount Tabor.
And that was a typo in connection with that in one round of the letters. I would note, however, that the address, of course, is correctly indicated, and all the site location maps are correctly located, and that that met with the approval of your own zoning staff.
I just wanted to make sure on record...
It did go to the appropriate people, but do you have that black book again? I gave you the...
Oh, yes.
I just wanted to make sure on record that that was noted.
Anything else, Mr. Douglas? Okay. All right, any additional questions from the commissioners? Additional questions? Okay. We are, we are now down, I'm sorry, oh, I didn't see, Mr. Mesker or Dr. Orver?
You get on the microphone.
Just a point of history, those of us that are old, as I am, may recall that there was a beacon light on this almost same location for years. Technology has been in this spot before.
Okay.
For whatever that's worth.
Okay. All right. All right. I did have one question, Mr. Pike, on the map that you had up earlier that showed the site, it showed a debris pile there on the, close to the location. What type of debris is that? Is it, it's not like super fun site where they dump chemicals or...
Well, we've done a full NEPA on this site, and it's passed muster. I forgot, I neglected to introduce previously that our property owner is here.
Okay.
Would you like to come forward and respond on that issue?
I don't think we...
And we're grateful for his presence.
I don't think we have him sworn in either, so we'll get you...
I'm sworn.
Oh, okay, all right, just name an address for the record.
Steve Jones, 2615 Highway 146 East. The debris on the property is a berm, it's dirt from the property, just built up as a berm on the property.
Okay. We just said something about a debris pile or something like that, or, you know, so I just wanted to make sure what that debris consisted of, I guess, so, okay. Any additional questions before we move into the next section? Ms. Albertson?
Not that I probably need this, but my question is, you talk about the pole will not be lighted, lit, whatever. Are we talking about the little red light that blinks on the top?
Yes.
And there are people who object to that?
Yes.
Really?
Yes.
That's astounding. Okay, thank you.
All right, well, let's move on into rebuttal, and I think, Mr. Pike, you wanted to...
I'd like to call Mr. Snyder up for just a second, if I could. Want to make sure we've cleared up the record here. And again, this is Gordon Snyder, who's here with me at the podium, who's our radio frequency design engineer. If you co-located on the tower that's been described, first, is that too close to one of our existing sites, and would that interfere with the network?
Yes, it is too close to our existing LaGrange site, which is, let's see, right here.
Okay.
And what would happen is, two of the, two of the sectors on, that would end up going on the Crown Tower, is that tower number 18 on that list? Is that what number it is?
I believe that's correct, yes.
Two of those sectors would interfere with, one sector making it almost unusable on the LaGrange site, is what would end up happening.
So part of the existing coverage on I-71 would be cannibalized and rendered moot by the installation of the new site?
Yes.
Okay.
Locating it on the other side of I-71 and helping cover up 146 better also gives it better separation, so that they'll share the coverage on 71 and alleviate a lot of the capacity need.
And second, would a co-location at that site also provide service to the vicinity surrounding our proposed site?
It would, but it wouldn't go much further than that, the location of the proposed new site.
It would not duplicate our service.
No, it would not.
And there'd be significant areas that our proposed site covers that would not be covered.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much, Gordon. Wanted to make sure that we cleared up that issue, and that we've done a good job of making sure we were clear, because the questions being asked here are legitimate, and I also want to note that these are difficult concepts. I have some math grades to explain why I do not do his job. So at this juncture, Mr. Chairman, we, you know, what I'd like to indicate is that, again, I recognize these are not, these are not easy cases, and, you know, in the best of all possible worlds, we'd have some new technology that would make that this unnecessary, but we don't have that. And I will tell you, from at this juncture, it's not on the horizon. Doesn't mean it won't happen someday, but it's not going to happen for a while. And in the interim, the mission that we're performing here is very important. It's vital to your community, and it's vital to your residents. And I don't want to discount the quality, the importance of providing quality cell service, even in less densely populated areas, arguably more isolated areas need this service even more, would be part of my argument. And I don't think we have the right to devalue some people's right to have service versus others. So I have nothing else. If there are any questions, my team and I are available.
Okay. That would constitute your final statement, Mr. Pike?
That's it.
Okay, all right. With that, docket PZ 16003, hearing is closed, and I would like to call on Mr. Urban and Mr. Carter, as we always do, to outline what is being requested on this docketed item, please. Mr. Urban, you want to go first?
Well, sure, this is a request, thank you, is a request for a consideration of a cell tower, and you've heard all the evidence. In your staff report, as always, there's a proposed motion for either approval or denial. If you choose to approve this, there are three proposed binding elements that the applicant has testified that they are willing to accept. The first one is, guarantee of removal in a case of abandonment shall be irrevocable. Second is, any proposed lighting shall meet FAA regulations in accordance with our standards, but this one is not to be lighted. And the third one is that the antenna tower shall be maintained in either galvanized steel finish or painted light gray or light blue in color. Haven't heard any other potential binding elements at this point, other than landscape plan as revised and proposed.
Okay. Mr. Carter?
That's correct.
Okay, everything, anything do you need to add?
It just has to be in writing, and signed by the chair, as opposed to just approved.
Oh, okay. All right.
And there's a findings of fact that, under tab G of the presentation, and I think that will, what we need is a motion to approve, and authorize the chair to sign that with the addition of the binding elements to that.
So that would substitute the motion for, I mean, that would be, the motion to approve this docket would be...
And to authorize you to sign the findings of fact in the tab G with the addition of the binding elements.
Okay. All right. With that, you've heard, you understand what Mr. Carter's saying?
Mr. Iden?
Would you explain that a little bit more?
We have to, for this to be a valid decision by the board, it has to be in writing, as opposed to just approval. And Mr. Pike has provided findings of fact that, under tab G, that covers all that, as opposed to coming back later and signing a, signing a document. My proposal is that you just approve the proposal and adopt his findings under tab G and authorize the chairman to sign it with the addition of the binding elements, which I don't think are in that.
Okay. I understand, Mr. McWilliams?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. You heard the explanation here, and so as chair, I would ask for a motion at this time on docket PZ 16003, I'm sorry. Oh, Ms. Albertson, did you have a question?
Yes, on the binding elements, can we put on there that they will maintain the landscaping, the new landscaping that is planted, like water it?
Sure. Is the applicant okay with that, Mr. Pike?
I'm okay with the, I don't know that we should say water, but we will certainly maintain, that we will maintain the landscaping.
Thank you.
All right. We would now entertain a motion on docket PZ 16003. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. King.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move for approval of the application, based on evidence and testimony presented. I find that this is consistent with the regulations of the comp plan. I would like to incorporate, as findings of fact, the Schedule G tab set forth in applicant's submittal, also supported by expert witness and testimony, those individuals being present and available for questioning and discussion and clarification in today's hearing. In addition, I would like to incorporate the language of the binding elements that were discussed.
Addition of Ms. Albertson's suggestion that they be maintained?
Including that. Anything additional?
You could actually say to, I'm sorry if I missed it, that...
Include the findings of fact? That language is to be incorporated into my motion.
And that would be allow the chair to sign that findings of fact?
Yes, sir.
All right, you heard the motion, do we have a second? Mr. McWilliams, seconds, okay. Do we have a discussion now on the motion to approve docket PZ 16003?
Question, I did hear you say, I think, that the inclusion of Ms. Albertson's as the fourth binding element, or by testimony, either. Okay, thank you.
Any additional discussion? Motion to approve.
Question.
Okay, question's been called, we will now proceed to vote on the docket PZ 16003, motion to approve. Ms. Fox, would you take the vote, please?
Ms. Albertson?
Yes.
Dr. Urban?
Yes.
Ms. Bonet?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Klinginfoos?
Yes.
Mr. Mesker?
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
All right, docket PZ 16003, motion to approve has been approved on a vote of 11 to 0. So with that, we'll take a 10-minute recess and reset for our last docketed item.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Pike?
Have a good trip.
Not bad.